From the foothills of the Sierra Nevada. A new hero will emerge. One who makes sure their friends and family are set. And has the power to go at a moment's notice. This fire season. You're the hero.
Nevada County has a new tool to make evacuations safer and more efficient in the event of an emergency. This new tool is called Zone Haven, and we need you to know your zone. In order to know your zone, you need to go to community.zonehaven.com, type in your address. Once your address populates in the pop-up window, take that information and write down the zone that is given to you where you know you'll find it in case of emergency.
Zone Haven and knowing your zone does not replace NICSOL and/or Code RED. It actually supplements them, and it makes those tools more powerful because you will know what zones are being evacuated or which ones are being placed on advisory. And as a result, you won't have to do anything else other than listen to those messages and know if it's time to go.
Even if you don't have internet, this could be done by word of mouth. It can be done by radio, or it could be us driving down the street. So please know your zone.
From Truckee to Lake of the Pines, from Chicago Park to Spenceville, every single square mile of Nevada County has a zone. And having a zone that you know for your neighborhood is going to help you save time to be able to evacuate and keep you and your family safe.
Ready Nevada County is an education campaign designed to help the public have successful outcomes during emergency events. We really focus on a whole host of disasters or emergency events. We want to have a broad spectrum. We want to be prepared for anything. But really, we focus a lot on wildfire because we know that's one of the most likely events to happen in Nevada County.
Ready, Set, Go is really built around the wildfire premise to prepare residents to be ready before an event, to move into the set posture when there's a red flag or a fire is near you, and then to go when it's time to go.
Essentially, in its simplest form, it's a three-tiered community emergency preparedness
I have lived in this house, which we built, my husband and I, 26 years ago now, actually. We selected the hardy plank, the concrete siding, and also the metal roof. Then when we moved up here and heard about the 49er fire, that's when we started to say, wow, this really is even more important than we first realized.
So the 49er fire is one of the most historic fires in Nevada County's history. They figured it changed the laws of the state of California that said, this is how you have to protect your home. That came out of Nevada County.
Steve Eubanks came from the Fire Safe Council, and the main thing we needed to pay attention to was the ladder fuels. Planting has been removed from the edges of the house so that it does not touch the house. It was an incredible service from the Fire Safe Council to come out and spend a couple of hours going through this property.
So the ready phase is when there's no immediate threat to you and your family. This is the time where you should be doing education and planning, whether that be training, educating yourself, or accumulating equipment, hardening your home, creating defensible space.
Defensible space is really all about creating a buffer.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We will call the meeting to order. We have a big crowd today. Our popularity is waning.
The oversight is here, Mike.
Yeah, that's good. So if you folks will please join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We are, I guess, before we are introduced to our new clerk, Brian, if you'll call the roll, please.
Sure. Commissioner Millman.
Here.
Commissioner Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner McEachir.
Here.
Commissioner Garst.
Here.
Chair Masterson-Donato.
Here. Any corrections to the agenda?
No corrections, Mr. Chair.
Brian, can we meet our new clerk, please?
Sure. Yeah, I'd like to introduce Jodina Patterson, who's sitting right next to me in the appropriate spot. She is our new admin assistant, and will be clerking the planning commission meetings. Today is her fourth day on the job, so still learning the ropes. I'll be doing the roll call for the vote, but after that, it'll be Jodina with the contact information, sending out the packets, and, you know, being the liaison with the planning commission. So welcome, Jodina.
Great, welcome. We look forward to working with you.
And just, Jodina, were you in the county of Nevada? Are you just a new employee from outside?
I'm a new employee here at Nevada County.
Okay.
But I do live in the county.
Well, that's nice to know. Great, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Now is the time for public comment. This time is set aside for any members of the public who may have something to address the planning commission on, on any issue or topic that is not on today's agenda. So if anyone has something to say, now's the time to do it. Please approach the podium, give us your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment period. Moving on, we have no commission business and no consent items today. Okay, so that brings us to our one item on the agenda, which is...
We have to wait till 1:35, don't we?
Do we really?
Uh-huh. Because it's advertised as such.
Yeah, sorry about that. The item originally scheduled for 1:30 was the continuation of the conger used for it, which was withdrawn by the applicant. And so just in case anyone showed up today who didn't get the notice, we wanted to give them the opportunity to...
Okay, so we could take a two-minute break.
So Brian, I have a question. Do we not have minutes anymore?
Commissioner McEachir, we do. We will need to prepare the minutes for the last couple of meetings.
Okay.
We just haven't, so over the next few weeks, we'll be preparing those and bringing them back to your next meeting.
Great, thank you so much.
Is it a planning joke? Or even a public works joke?
Wish we had one of those Jeopardy! soundtracks.
Yeah.
Would that be good?
Someone may be waiting to dash in the door at 1:35. Oh, look at that, Mike.
Okay, it's 1:35. So we will move to our one agenda item, which is a proposed amendment to an approved map. And this is Marie again. It's all yours, Marie.
Thank you, Chair Masterson-Donato. Greetings, everyone. My name is Marie Maniscalco. I am here on behalf of Nevada County Planning Department. I'm an associate planner. The project before you today is the Schaefer map amendment. It's located at 13209 Robles Drive in Auburn, California. It is on the shore of Lake Combi, which is the image that you are seeing here. The project proposes a shade pavilion located approximately 35 feet from Lake Combi. This is a typical use in the area. It would be considered a residential accessory structure. However, the recorded subdivision map that was originally approved in 1976 does have a strict 100-foot building setback on the map. So the proposal is to remove that strict 100-foot building setback and instead apply for a management plan for development within 100 feet of a perennial water course and within 100 feet of a floodplain. This project is located in western Nevada County. You can see the small red dot on the southeastern portion of the county, right at the county line there, on the shore of Lake Combi, as I mentioned. It is just south of the Lake of the Pines subdivision, approximately a quarter mile from the intersection of Combi Road and Dark Horse Drive. The project parcel itself is 4.72 acres in size. It was created as parcel three of the Lake Combi Estates subdivision map, which we'll take a look at here in a moment. The zoning is general agricultural with a minimum parcel size of 10 acres. That just means, in this case, that the parcel can't be split any further. It's developed with a primary residence, accessory dwelling unit, and residential accessory structures, including a couple garages, a storage structure, and a dock onto Lake Combi. Nearby zoning includes more general agricultural zoning, residential agricultural. The lake itself is zoned public. There's some open space to the northeast, and recreational zoning, which includes the Dark Horse Golf Course. The surrounding parcels are similarly developed with residential, agricultural, and recreational uses. What you're seeing here is sheet four of the recorded Lake Combi Estates subdivision map. This was processed under FM 76-2 back in 1976. I'll show you a close-up of the parcel and the setback in question, but we're looking at parcel three for this project. As you can see, all the parcels here have this 100-foot leach field and building setback line along Lake Combi. This is the site plan for the current proposed project. You'll notice the already developed items here outlined on the site plan, as well as the proposed shade pavilion down here. As you can see, it's within this 100-foot setback. I'll take a closer look in a moment. This is the proposed shade pavilion, some elevations, just to give you a feel of what we're working with here. So to dive in, this is the existing subdivision map. This dashed line, I had to pull this over from another part of the map, but it is indicating a 100-foot building and leach field setback line. Importantly, this project is preserving the leach field setback line, so there won't be any, there's no proposed changes to that. Instead, what's proposed is to, as I said, retain the 100-foot leach field setback line, but instead apply the resource protection standards that are part of current county code. What that means is if you're within 100 feet of a water course, then a management plan is required, in order to mitigate any potential impacts to that body of water. I'll talk a little bit more about those management plans that have been prepared for this project in a moment. So as I just mentioned, within 100 feet of Lake Combi or any other perennial water course, so any year-round water course, a management plan is required. These are normally processed administratively through the planning department. Because this project requires an amendment to a recorded subdivision map, which was originally approved by the planning commission, that's why it's in front of you here today. And we bring you also all of the other entitlements that go with this project. So a water course management plan was prepared by a pre-qualified biological consultant, such that any impacts to the lake are minimized. Some of these conditions of approval that are included for this project include limiting construction to dry weather, installing erosion control devices, such as straw waddles, limiting vehicle and equipment access, ensuring that all staging areas for supplies and equipment are outside of that 100-foot setback, no refueling or maintenance of vehicles or equipment within 100 feet, as well as some contractor awareness training. So again, the goal is really to ensure that there's minimal impacts, no erosion, nothing else getting into the water course. This was prepared in, along with our, meets our standards in the code. In addition to the water course management plan, we also, this project also requires a floodplain management plan. The lake bed of Lake Combi is considered to be in the 100-year floodplain, and so this project being within 100 feet of that required a management plan to be prepared by a licensed civil engineer. It determined that there's no impact to the floodplain, and also includes conditions of approval very similar to what we saw for the water course management plan, including dry season work. Erosion control also includes some ground cover seeding and ongoing inspection to ensure that the erosion control measures are in place throughout the entirety of construction. This project is consistent with zoning and the general plan for rural and general agricultural. It's consistent with residential and low-intensity recreational uses. As detailed in the staff report, this project is also consistent with general plan policies related to protecting water resources, protecting development from flood hazards, and establishing land uses that complement existing communities. For the environmental review for this project, in 1976, when the original subdivision map was created, the planning commission adopted a negative declaration saying that there would be no impacts to the environment due to the creation of this subdivision map. We prepare, I prepared a sequoia addendum, which explains that there are no additional impacts. One of the things that I wanted to highlight here was a lot of what was discussed in 1976 was related to, specifically to, the soil types not being suitable for septic and leach field within that zone 100 feet. For the building setback, there wasn't quite as much evidence that I found in the past staff report supporting that, and the planning department feels that the current requirements for management plans to minimize any of those potential impacts is adequate to ensure that these resources are protected today. Therefore, we recommend that after reviewing and considering the proposed addendum to the adopted negative declaration, that it be adopted, that the water course management plan and floodplain management plans be approved, and that the proposed amended map application also be approved for this project. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay. Would the applicant like to speak? No? Not yet? Well, you're here if we have any questions. Okay, great. So that being said, does anyone have any quick questions before we open the public hearing? Which is going to be, okay. That being said, this is a public hearing, so at this time, if there's anyone here that would like to speak on this particular item before us, now's the time. Again, approach, I don't think there's anyone here, but approach the podium, give us your name and address, and seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public hearing and open it up to commissioners for any questions. I'll start with Commissioner Garst.
Thanks for the presentation. I had a question about precedence for this. You mentioned in the report that Lot 12 had applied for a reduction from the 200-foot setback. Are there other sites on the lake that this reduction or elimination of the building setback has been eliminated or reduced aside from that?
Not specifically from this subdivision map. As you can see here, there are some smaller parcels on the next peninsula to the west of this subdivision. They do not have similar setbacks. They just have the standard county setbacks.
Were those, was that subdivision established before or after this?
To be honest, I'm not sure. I don't have that handy. I apologize.
I guess, the other comment I had is that the building being proposed is like 1,439 square feet, I believe, if my long division is correct, and, which doesn't, to me, seem consistent with the uses of docks or shade structures that are existing within these 100-foot setbacks. So I just was questioning that finding that the building is consistent with uses, other existing uses.
Sure, yeah, I can speak to that a little bit. The docks specifically are exempt from building setbacks in our code and exempt from our water course management plans. So this structure is similarly to, it actually, it's more in the category of really any structure. So whether it's a, any structure that requires a building permit, so whether it's a 300-foot shed or, you know, a 4,000-square-foot house, it would, they would all require management plans to ensure that there's no impact to the lake.
Yeah, I think I just have some concerns about the size of the structure being akin to, say, a two-bedroom residence, and that this project, say, establishing precedent that, what's to say that other residents will now ask for similar adjustments to their site plans? So that's all I have. Oh, and then, oh, I have one more thing. I noticed in the report that there had been some grading activities done, or were observed by one of the biological, or the management plan preparers. Was that, is that something that would be allowed within a non-disturbance buffer or non-unbuildable area?
So typically, anything that requires a grading or building permit is going to be subject to a management plan. I was out on site a few months ago. It's a relatively flat area already, and so I'm, my assumption was that the amount of grading that had taken place there was under the threshold that would require a grading permit.
One of the other findings stated that the, there were no other suitable sites for this building on the property, which, given that it is, seems to be a relatively level lot, seems to be not necessarily the case, and if this building were to be located in allowable, existing allowable building areas, it seems like that could happen.
Sure. I will mention that it's pretty typical, as far as when we're processing management plans, that we will look at, you know, given the proposed use of it as being kind of a lakeside amenity, we tend to be somewhat flexible about that particular requirement. And given, as I said, the proposed use of this structure, it seemed like an appropriate sighting.
But with the map amendment, that would allow them to build potentially further, further develop that area, correct?
Correct, with further management plans. So this specific entitlement for the management plan is specific to this structure, so any further proposed development would need a new management plan entitlement.
But that would just be staff-level approval?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I...
Commissioner McEachir.
So I'm interested in just a couple things here. Is there water and electricity running into this shade structure?
I believe so. Is that correct? Yes.
Okay. And what, since it's really an NID lake, what's been the response? Has NID notified? What's NID say?
Yeah, NID was notified for the project. I had an email back from Shannon Wood with NID saying they had no objections to the project.
Okay. And Mrs. Schaefer, is it Mrs. Schaefer? Sorry. How are your neighbors about all this? Do they all know that this is under, and everybody's okay?
Yes, everybody's okay.
Why don't you come up, I think you better come up to the podium, just for the sake of, that's okay.
Can you hear, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah.
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, my name is Kim Schaefer, and I live at 13209 Robles Drive in Auburn.
Okay. And so about your neighbors, what we're interested in?
Yeah, so the neighbors have all been very supportive. What we're trying to do is very consistent with a lot of properties that are even in the subdivision, that have built things, you know, similar to this.
So I'm sort of also interested in, you obviously said, well, gee, let's put a shade structure down by the lake, and then you realized, oh my goodness, we're going to have to go through a lot of bureaucracy for a shade structure. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah.
Okay, that's okay.
Didn't anticipate this.
I'm not, I'm not here, I'm more of an interested person as to how much time this took, how long this was planned, and how long, how long did this process take for you? This is more about me understanding what a average citizen has to go through.
Yeah, so we filed the application a year ago, in May of 2023. So, you know, almost a year. We've been going through this.
And how's been your feeling of this process going through this, outside of expensive?
Oh, I, I think it's justified. I think everything that's been put in place, you know, we want to do this the right way. So I can completely appreciate it. We're just trying to do something lawfully.
Right.
You know, we wanted to do it the right way, and this is, this is the process. We understand that.
Great, thank you very much. That's all.
Commissioner Duncan.
Well, I commend the applicant for legally coming forward and applying for approval to place a shade structure down near the water. This is an old subdivision map. I mean, 1976, you go back through and you look at the names on that map, and a lot of those folks are no longer here, or they went on to greater and bigger ventures out in the world of planning and engineering. And then you look at Schollerman, the original subdivider, and they...
I looked for your name first. I didn't know this was...
I can't say local yet.
This was Willard's subdivision?
Well, I think it was his father's. Because Willard's name is not on there.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's always interesting, you know, to look at projects that dig deep into county history, and you get a little insight as to what was going on. And I think at that time, best practices were employed to come up with these maps. And over time, you don't always fully anticipate where you're going to go, you know, what the eventual uses are going to be, or even just better practices come to light. And so we all learn through the process, and I think this is one of those. In terms of, you know, coming and saying, okay, I'm possibly, you know, out of compliance here, you know, is there a way to do it? And coming through, I think, the county's process, the planning department has, you know, shed a lot of light as to what we have here, and how residents, how the community, you know, best uses their land, and that we do have a reasonable approach to getting there for everyone's enjoyment. So it's nice to hear that there are no objections to, from the neighbors, and they were noticed. I mean, according to the planning department's requirements, that people do hear about what's proposed. So I feel pretty satisfied that that was allowed. So with that, I don't have any other comments to make.
Commissioner Millman.
So we're looking at parcel three, correct?
That's correct.
And so where on this would the actual structure go in relationship to, yeah, so...
Yeah, just right about here. But it's about 35 feet from the ordinary high watermark of Lake Combi.
So it's not only within the setback line at the lake, but it's also within the setback line of whatever that creek or drainage courseway is that goes down the center, the property line, correct?
Correct. There's some other kind of riparian-type habitat. It's a bit wet in this part of the parcel, and so the management plan was prepared in consideration of all of those things. Pre-qualified biologists went out and did a full on-the-ground site survey, and those were the recommendations that came forward.
So I didn't see, I saw the elevations of the structure, but I didn't see a floor plan. What's in that structure?
See, I'll let the applicant actually speak to that a little bit. I don't have those plans handy at the moment.
Happy to jump up here again. Do I need to push? Nope, there we go. So we are putting some lounge furniture, a dining table, like a, not a dining table, but a table for eating at, and a little kitchen, outdoor kitchen, like barbecue... but a, a table for eating at, and a little kitchen, outdoor kitchen, like barbecue area. It's where we do most of our entertaining, is down by the water, because we love the lake so much, so. And our property, it's hard to tell from the layout of the property, but the houses are way up at the top, so it's just not, it's kind of disjointed. Yeah, it's, it doesn't look like a, a lot, but you don't want to be walking that on a regular basis.
I'm curious about the condition, thank you. I totally understand why you would want to do this. I'm curious about the conditions or the management. It, it seems like most of those have to do with the actual construction of it and not anything afterwards?
Correct, yeah, and that's pretty typical of what we see for these types of plans. Occasionally, there could be additional, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of an example where we had conditions related to operations, but I think, given the nature of the structure and its occasional use, that its operational phase will also not have significant impacts on the lake.
So I think in the course of my career of construction and development, this is the first time I've ever seen where we're being asked to relax setbacks on a waterway? And I, I'm wondering why we are doing that?
Commissioner Millman, as Commissioner Duncan pointed out, the standards in 1976 were much different than they are today. And in 2000, after the adoption of the 1995 general plan, the county adopted resource protection standards, which developed the 100-foot setback from water courses. We, we actually see on quite frequent basis dealing with parcel maps at the zoning administrator level, where they had specific recommendations, like, for example, in 1980 or 70, the slope standard was 20%. And our current standards allow you to go up to 30% building, and so people have to come back, because there's a note on the map that says no build area, 20% slopes, and they get an engineer to look at the slopes and determine that, okay, these are actually not 30%, they might be around 20, but if they do X, Y, and Z, similar to this management plan, then they, they can build an area. So it's very common for parcel maps, a little bit less common for final maps. I think the commission recently looked at some building envelopes for the Stevens map, very similar to this, where they were moving a, a building envelope around, and one of the restrictions on that map in particular was they could only have so much square footage of development, and so they kind of reduced one building envelope and made another one to not exceed that, that area. So because there's current standards in place, they don't just blink and go back and get rid of all these notes and requirements on old maps. And so this is the process that's been established to amend that map, but it's not as common on, on final maps.
And just to add on to that, sorry to interrupt, as Marie mentioned, we see these a lot administratively, and the only reason it's in front of the planning commission is because of the map issue, but we administratively approve between 20, 30 a year for reduction and setbacks to water courses or oak groves, those things could even be more than 20 or 30, mostly associated with building permits that are done at staff level.
I also want to add that the, the 100-foot building setback is going to go from being a no-build area to considered an environmentally sensitive area, consistent with how we apply that standard to maps today. And so therefore, it's still shown as an area for protection, but it's not a strict no-building, because our code does allow you to build within that setback.
Lake Combi's an interesting project, because it's a man-made feature that was created by the damming of the Bear River. And, you know, where, where's the real waterway there, flowing underneath? But these are the rules, I guess, that we have in order to allow projects. And I think, Marie, the planner, has done a good job of getting us to this point to consider it.
No, I appreciate everybody working to kind of explain where we are and how we've wandered over here.
We'll be wandering again, no doubt, as the year goes on.
I think I'll ponder quietly over here, I don't think I have any more questions.
Thank you. I, I just have a couple of questions. One is the, from looking at this screen that we're looking at currently, it looks like there's some type of access roadway pathway that leads down towards this project. And, and also am I to assume that you, you, Ms. Schaefer, you have a, a, a dock down there with a boat?
That is correct, yes.
And this structure, which was named Pool Cabana?
Yeah, or Shade Pavilion.
Is there a?
We don't really know what to call it, but
Oh, okay, so there's no pool down there?
No. No, we have the lake.
So anyway, I guess my question is, is, is that roadway pathway accessible by vehicle? Golf cart, cars, trucks, I mean?
Yes.
And, and will there be, let's say, for instance, you have, you know, eight guests coming, will, is there a plan to drive down to this structure and park by it, or?
Occasionally, we do have people that drive over. Most of our friends are on Lake Combi and usually come over by boat, so they're accessing through, by the dock.
And, and I guess my question would be, should the, should the instance come up where a vehicle is taken down to this area, will it be parked within this new setback or the 100-foot setback? Because if I had any concerns, I mean, I certainly don't have any concerns with the structure, but maybe parking vehicles down there, you know, might set off a couple of bells and whistles.
Do you, do you want me to answer?
You're referring to cars, Mike, trucks and cars?
Yeah, I mean, basically, if you have guests and, you know, for some reason or another, I mean, this is a, almost five-acre parcel, so I, I would assume when it's downhill from the house to the lake, that you may, you may have guests that wish to drive down there, even yourself, I mean, have to transport food and beverage and things down there to. So, so my concern is parking around the structure.
Sure, the, we don't currently have any conditions of approval that would prohibit parking, and it's not, within our land use code, we don't see prohibitions of parking typically.
One of the ways that people use their land, especially when they have the larger acreage, is they'll have golf carts or side-by-sides or quads, which oftentimes are used, and would there be a concern with something like that, or are you specifically referring to vehicles?
I guess it's vehicles. I guess my concern is, you know, if, if we're, you know, we're adjusting this setback, and environmentally, if there's a vehicle down there leaking oil, how that affects, I mean, the structure itself and the purpose and the use of it is, is one thing. That's, the, the vehicle issue or question for me is the only one that, that kind of jumps up as to being something that would not normally be allowed in a closer setback to a waterway like that.
Mr. Chair, the, the code's not specific towards land use, and technically, the applicant can use their private property and could back their truck up to it every day currently, whether you approve this or not. So, you know, it's not something that's kind of covered by our zoning code.
Gotcha.
But we definitely hear the, the concern, just not, it's not built into the structure of our code, we're focused more on the impacts of the construction. The private use of it by a private property owner is, is kind of their liability and purview.
Yeah, that's fair. And then lastly, it, it, the intention of this project is private use?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I think that's all I have.
You guys ready for a motion?
We're ready.
Or Danny, do you have any more questions? Maybe staff might
Anything else?
Shed some light on something?
I don't think I have questions on
I don't think I have other questions specifically in terms of the code, et cetera.
Okay. I propose, after reviewing and considering the proposed addendum to adopted negative declaration, EIS 76-20 included as attachment two, to adopt the proposed addendum to adopted negative declaration, EIS 76.20 pursuant to section 15164 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines and make findings A through C.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Brian, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Can I abstain?
You, you can, you can vote yes or no or abstain, and you can give a reason or, or not give a reason.
I'll abstain, thank you.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Yes.
And Chair Master Donato?
Yes, the motion passes.
I propose to approve water course management plan included as attachment seven, subject to the attached conditions of approval, making findings A and B pursuant to section Roman numeral L 2, 4.3.17 of the Nevada County zoning code.
And I'll second that again.
We have a motion and a second. Brian, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Abstain.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Master Donato?
Yes, motion passes.
Further approve the floodplain management plan included as attachment eight, subject to the attached conditions of approval, and make findings A and B pursuant to section Roman numeral L dash two, 4.3.10 of the Nevada County zoning code.
Second.
Motion and a second. Brian, if you'll call the vote.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Abstain.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
And Chair Master Donato?
Yes, motion passes.
After reviewing and considering the proposed amended map application, approve the amended map, subject to the recording of an amended map of certificate of correction for parcel three as recorded in book five of subdivision maps at page 42 pursuant to the conditions of approval shown in attachment one, making findings A through G pursuant to sections Roman numeral L dash two, 4.3.13, and Roman numeral L dash four, 2.18 of the Nevada County Land Use and Development Code.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Brian, if you'll call the vote, please.
Commissioner Duncan?
Yes.
Commissioner McAtier?
Yes.
Commissioner Millman?
Abstain.
Commissioner Garst?
Yes.
Chair Master Donato?
Yes, motion passes, and we're subject to appeal, 10-day appeal. Great, congratulations, good luck with your project.
Good job, Marie.
Marie's becoming a cagey veteran. Anything going on, Brian? When can we look to getting together again? Take the summer off?
Not quite that long, I think you can probably have May off, but we may be having an item in June, potentially. The Wolf Craft Collective, which is down off of Wolf Road, potentially will be ready in June. We also potentially may be trying to schedule a meeting in Truckee around July for a project or two up in, in that neck of the woods. So as we get closer and define if projects are ready, we'll reach out, but we will not be having a meeting on May 9th, and unlikely for the one on the second meeting, 23rd of May. But we'll keep you informed.
What was proposed on May 9th?
Nothing, I don't believe. I think it was just the next reg, the next two weeks from today, so it was just tentatively on the calendar as a potential date, if there was a project, but nothing was scheduled.
Truckee road trip? So, is that like a party bus, or?
Party bus or county vehicles, but we can, we can just make a party out of it.
Just wondering.
I'm sorry, I will miss that. I will be gone from June 25th to August 5th.
Great, where are you going?
Europe.
Wonderful.
Good.
And July may be tough for me, too, I don't know yet.
So I think maybe we should be able to tell Brian, if we have any other dates, that I think would be beneficial, such as July 11th, that second Thursday would not work for me, if possible. I can make the 1st, no, wait, that's, that's July 4th, but I can make the 25th, just fine. Okay? Anyone else?
Yeah, the last half of August, I'm not going to be available, and possibly the first week of September.
And I'm just unclear as to the, probably from the third, no, the second week of July through the last week of July, it's tentative, but I'm not sure yet. I'll be available.
Could we go back to the pending projects? The gas station proposed at the corner of 49, I mean, it, it states the status is complete, is there any thought as to when that's going to come forward?
Staff is working on completing the secret document for that, and once we have that complete and out for public review, we'd have a better idea, but tentatively, might be July as well, but we wouldn't want to conflict with the Truckee meeting and these dates that you may not be available, so we'll, we'll try and coordinate that. But right now, it's still, until we get that secret document prepared and released, we can't completely predict when the project will come forward, but it is in process.
Okay, and then the Holiday Inn Gas Station was approved last year, is there any sense of when that's going to come forward, or are they going to run out of time on this one?
I have not seen an application for a building permit or anything along those lines for that, so we could let them know that if it's going to expire soon, that they can get an extension.
Yeah, it's good for three years, and then they can have two, two-year extensions. So when we get, if we're running up on that three-year deadline, we can remind them to file for an extension if necessary.
Okay.
And that would come back to your commission.
The Wolf Creek, the Wolf Craft Collective, I mean, this description now includes a low-intensity camp, I think, I, I wasn't aware that there was a camp, I knew there were events that they wanted to do.
Is that a Phase Two, or?
I don't, I'm not sure what phase it is, but I think as a part of their program, they want to offer overnight lodging for people who come from out of town.
Okay.
Can, can I suggest that, that they be given our phone numbers or, or email or whatever, because I would like the chance to go down and see the property. On a thing like that, that would be really valuable for, for, just like, just like the Penn Valley thing that I drove down to, but
I think we should work through council regarding site visits.
Yeah, whatever.
And probably shouldn't be with the applicant.
Okay, all I know is I'd like to be able to see it, since it's probably, how, how large of a parcel is this?
I want to say it's around 20 acres, but again, Marie, Marie is also the planner for that, so she knows this, she's better than I do.
Okay, thank you.
That property goes down to Wolf Creek. The Blakemore use permit, that's been kicking around for a while.
Yeah, I can speak to that one. We have a few of those, actually, and the one right below at the East Bennett Industrial Park is also in that same realm. Our planner has reached out to the applicant several times, it was originally initiated as a code case, and they have not been replying to us regarding their incomplete items. So we have reached out to code compliance about
It used to be District Two, that's why, you know, it shifted over time. But so essentially, you're saying this is to get them into compliance?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other one, Hobart Mills, I mean, is that really, is that moving? Has there been movement there?
Recently, the project was deemed incomplete. They're trying to make some expansion to their existing use, some of it, which has already occurred, but also to change some of the rec zoning that is currently on the site to allow for an of the rec zoning that is currently on the site to allow for increased industrial, and so the most recent version of their comprehensive master plan requires some revisions, so the ball's in the applicant's court currently.
Okay. And then Dark Horse?
I'm trying to remember.
Which, which Dark Horse?
Golf course.
The Golf Course. There's nothing submitted from Dark Horse for the Golf Course that I'm aware of.
No, we had a, an inquiry, I think from the Golf Course owner, about putting in kind of a snack shop where the old temporary clubhouse was, and was inquiring about the process, and depending on the size and location, I think we recommended that it would be an amended use permit, because that use permit is expired for developing the clubhouse, so that would be something that they would need to submit and would likely be, come before your commission.
Okay.
But we have not seen official plans yet, just some general inquiries.
Thank you. Oh, a question about signs, you know those banner signs that businesses put up to draw traffic in? When they're in the public right-of-way, those are considered illegal, aren't they?
Yeah, they're not supposed to be in the public right-of-way. There's a few allowances for those types of sign, but they're generally associated within the first 30 days, or 30, I think, 30 days of opening a business. We have allowed some temporary-type signs to occur or to exist, as long as they're taken down and put, put back up, only during business hours, that doesn't always happen. So there, it's very likely that some of those signs could be out of compliance, and we would need to respond through a code case.
Okay.
But if it's a new business, then they are allowed, and if they're just temporary for a day event, but kind of those ongoing, just are out there all the time, are not supposed to be out there in that manner.
Right, that was my understanding, is that they were limited to business hours.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Just for looking at the code, it's, it's 90 days, so they do have a little bit of extra time then, the 30. Okay, anything else? Anyone? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.